Call to order the meeting of the Terre Haute City Council's Committee on Governmental Affairs, Parks, and Public Property. At this time, we'll ask Michelle to call the roll.
Counselperson Azar, counselperson Boland.
Present.
I apologize. They printed me the wrong form.
They gave you the full list, didn't they?
Yeah. One second. Okay. Counselperson, let me pull up the right form.
Committee is bigger than we thought.
Okay. Counselperson Azar, counselperson Boland.
Present.
Counselperson Chalos.
Present.
Counselperson Dinkle.
Present.
Counselperson Lattimil.
Present.
Counselperson Thompson. For present, to or absent.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. At this time, we're going to discuss a matter referred by the full council to this committee, discussion concerning the Human Relations Commission in city code. This is Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-65. Just a brief recap from our last meeting of the full council. We had an appointment to the vacancy on Human Relations Commission. Several members had brought to attention the party affiliation requirement for this board, and after some discussion, this was referred to this committee for further consideration of updating this code as a whole. I will tell you, I've met with A.T. Ryan, the Human Relations Executive Director, and attended the last Human Relations Commission meeting to discuss these changes with them. I think this discussion initially started because of the composition requirement in the ordinance, but as these discussions have continued, I think we have found a need to update this ordinance more broadly so that it's indicative of the real mission and work of the commission and its executive directors. Michelle sent us, I think you all got, the different iterations of this ordinance over the years. It was originally from 1968 and has undergone five changes maybe since then. So at this time, I'll just open it up for discussion. Anybody that has comments, thoughts on submitting this ordinance.
Thank you.
See from here? Okay. So thank you all for taking this under consideration. I think one of the things, number one, I want to make sure I share is that our commission is undergoing a strategic planning process, and we just met on Saturday to talk through, you know, what do we want moving forward as a commission? And so in that, we were developing our goals and trying to align them to the responsibilities section of our ordinance, and that's one of the areas that I think we realize it's, while it has a lot of words, and a lot of words that can maybe feel specific, it also feels a bit vague. And so we want to make sure that as you all are taking this under consideration, that we maybe look at that responsibility section to ensure that what we're doing is what the community needs us to do. So if we look at the first responsibility, the study, study the relationships between persons of various races, sexes, creeds, abilities, nationalities within the city, and to advise and assist the various city departments in matters involving relationships between such groups to the end that prejudice and tolerance, bigotry, and discrimination will be eliminated in Terre Haute. I think one thing that we want to know is like, or we kind of were wondering was like, what did they originally mean by study the relationships between persons? Our interpretation of that is like conducting research or partnering with research institutions on conducting research as a means of eliminating barriers such as what was listed. But if we could, I think somewhat pick, I feel like there's a few grammar things in there as well with national, within the city, and to advise. I think there can be some tightening up there. I think, I think it's still important that we are including the studying, the relationships, but perhaps also adding studying and analyzing the relationships between persons as a means of understanding the presence of barriers such as inequity and tolerance and inaccessibility in order to promote equity, accessibility, opportunity, and belonging in the city. And I think, sorry, this is a bit, but to advise and assist the various city departments, I feel like that part also could be like taken from that first responsibility and made into its own responsibility of like providing guidance, education, assistance to city departments in order to eliminate systems-level barriers. Breaking that, I feel like breaking that into can help guide us in a more, I don't know, thoughtful direction as opposed to just this really big, broad responsibility. The second responsibility of identifying and recommending ways to eliminate discrimination, I think that that one's like pretty fine. But then the third one, I feel like it kind of says the same thing as the one before, but in vaguer terms of like any condition having an adverse effect upon people, like whoa, that's a really big, broad group, and like maybe we can tighten that one again, make it more specific, or recognize that maybe it's redundant and it's also too broad and that we need to eliminate that and rewrite it to be more specific. Institute and conduct education, this also, I feel like is, it's a bit of a typo. Institute and conduct educational and other programs, like could it not just be educational programs and activities intended to promote? I feel like that is a good way to tighten that one up as well. And then the last one, solicit cooperation, again, just making sure we're like being really specific about like what do we want that to look like, so that way that the person in this role, myself, the commissioners, we can just have more direction as to like what we need to be doing in order to serve the city. I will let you all speak. I feel like I talked for a long time, so. Sorry.
A.T., when we met last week and discussed this, I think something that was, that's missing from the ordinance as written, that your office and the commission is undertaking are initiatives with diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. Is that, would you say that's fair?
I would agree, and I think, as I mentioned with the, like providing education to like city departments, I feel like that is something that we need to be more specific about as opposed to kind of putting it inside of its own responsibility, or inside of the responsibility one, breaking that out and saying like providing guidance and education to city departments to assist in eliminating barriers or to promote equity, inclusion, opportunity, accessibility. I think accessibility is one that we really want to hit places here. Sorry, I feel like this is cutting in and out, as our role.
Okay. Well, that's a sign.
Kind of to piggyback on A.T.'s comments, outside of accessibility, as you all know, as many folks know, we do have a large population that is unhoused in Terre Haute and Vigo County. So when we are looking at the Human Relations Commission and, you know, moving it away from just a conversation on that acronym DEI, but also ADA accessibility and, you know, finding solutions for those that are unhoused and having conversations around mental health access to folks within Terre Haute and Vigo County. Yes, we've got a community health center in Hamilton Center, but just some of the work that A.T. is doing that I guess you could argue is not in the code, you know, we're moving forward to start a partnership with the mayor of Noblesville, Chris Jensen, on their mobile integrated health unit and all the work that they're doing around mental health advocacy, their social worker, which includes a social worker dog, and just some of the programs that they have that have been proven to have a positive impact on their community's mental health concern. That's obviously not in our code, but it is a huge challenge that we believe is kind of defined by a conversation like Human Relations. So fair housing, mental health, ADA compliance traditionally, the accessibility ADA conversations. Our engineering department is really, really short-staffed. I mean, they're doing a ton of great work, but this was one of the many tasks that they were charged with. And when you look at the charge of a commission like a Human Relations Commission, it does fit the parameters, and we are fortunate to have A.T. that she can handle all of these projects and make substantial growth in them. But that's one reason why, you know, my personal push was for this code to be updated, not just the commission requirements. I am very concerned about the precedent set forth by changing just commission requirements, just to be clear, about saying, hey, you know, we believe that one local party is not able to fill their number of seats. Not just the message that that sends, but the precedence of what's stopping other local boards or whomever the next mayor is to saying, hey, I'll take a supermajority of one party on as many boards as they can. Of course, there are laws, and every board and commission is separate, but that message compared to the message of no, the code fundamentally needs to be changed is the route that I wanted to push the conversation.
Mayor, so in your view, you feel that homelessness, mental health, accessibility should all be under the purview of this commission, is that correct?
Yes.
And I think that's the important, at least takeaway I have, is that things have changed since 2006 and the needs and the mission of this commission. I think it is unique in comparing other communities that the Human Relations Director serves essentially under the commission rather than the executive.
Yes.
So my want for this personally, and I'll let everybody else speak to it as well, is to make sure that stuff is codified in the ordinance so it is not at the whim of whomever sits in your seat, whoever sits in her seat.
Yes.
So that we have sent the message that as the council, as the administration, this is always going to be a priority for our city. It's not up to whoever's sitting in your positions. It's outlined in our code.
Because I'd be interested, Councilman Thompson's perspective on this specific line too, because I really got hung up on Section 265A1, under the definition of discrimination, physical or mental disability while it's referenced. I didn't see a good reference to housing in that definition of discrimination, which is when I really got concerned of like, hey, now we spend two, three pages solely on the commission and not enough pages on, okay, like.
Action.
Action for those entities. Like if she, you know, when she is starting to help with physical, mental disability under discrimination, that means that you are having conversations with city engineering, the grading of sidewalks, businesses when they come in and are filing zoning variance, are you ADA compliant? This just continues to compound because she attends the homeless coalition meetings, and there is nothing in here that's stating that she, and she's already going above and beyond and doing that, but codifying that for when, you know, we eventually leave is, I guess I just don't know how it should be worded and added to the section. I'm pretty unemotional as long as the intent is met.
I think it goes to the whole word of opportunity that A.T. mentioned. I mean, that homelessness is a lack of opportunity in a lot of ways. I think we need to include housing status in perhaps the definitions of the discrimination definition.
It might be under the fair housing ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a separate ordinance for fair housing. I think, yeah, I think also just like what is, after like what's being said, when, like there's a lot of broad, like social services that I think sometimes get addressed by the Human Relations Commission, and some of what I do is based off of like what was historically done. For example, attending the homeless coalition meetings. The Jeff Lorick, who was the executive director for many years for the Human Relations Commission, was heavily involved in that coalition, served as a chair. So, you know, continuing to do some of that work, that's the unofficial official work of the Human Relations Commission, but making sure that it's in the ordinance, not just, not just because it would be good to have it written down, but also to ensure that like we are messaging to the public, like this is being addressed by this group, and we have that like legal authority to do so.
Mayor, and have you had a chance, and I don't know if you have, and I can probably look it up, have we looked at Noblesville, their code? Does it address some of this?
Yes, they're coming April 18th, bringing their entire team that started their mental health program to do a roundtable, and so they're going to bring paper copies, and then we're going to sit and look at some of the, not just the Terre Haute legislation, but, you know, a large reason why we're working with Noblesville specifically is Mayor Jensen was pivotal in his actions at the State House this past session for creating a statewide grant that funds like CIT training, but also mobile integrated health and social worker programs that we have won, right? We are looking to expand, you know, and I publicly said this, we are looking, our opioid funds, our opioid settlement funds, to actually improve that social worker program. But now that the state is bringing funds to bear, that's why we're partnering with Noblesville on those efforts. I do look at Bloomington a bit too. Similar challenges, you know, and just, those have been the two that I've looked at most, Bloomington and Noblesville.
And I brought that up to A.T., and I saw they have a pretty solid written code, and that's what I'm saying, and I guess where I'm getting at, I mean, we don't have to always reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
I'm all about plagiarizing once in a while if somebody's had success, you know, in what they're doing, and, but you mentioned Noblesville, and I was just read through Bloomington's, and theirs is pretty solid too.
So the Director of Human Rights, that's his, that's the title in Bloomington. I've worked with Michael in the past with nonprofit work in Bloomington, so A.T.'s already made a trip and connected with them, and now it's merging two city documents, taking the strengths into one. The unfortunate side is that's, we're probably going to need two months of that, so if we can come to an agreement that there will be a vacancy for several months while we codify a rewrite of this section, I did just want to bring that up of, I don't want us to speed the rewrite along because we need to fill the vacancy.
I appreciate your legwork on a lot of this, Mayor. And A.T. also.
If I can, if I can add just briefly about Bloomington, they have their Department of Community and Family Resources, which is the broader department that their Human Relations Commission or their Human Rights Commission is housed under. That ordinance has some more language that relates to accessibility, inclusion, DEI practices, and so forth. But also, when we, if we look at implementing their, like, if taking parts that we like from their ordinance, we also need to look at the resources that they have to be able to support that office. They have a full-time attorney that assists their commission. They have multiple staff members that are just dedicated to human rights, and then they have staff members dedicated to the other parts of their Community and Family Resources Department. So just making sure that whatever we choose, that it's still accomplishable by myself and a volunteer commission.
Yeah. They have a $249 budget.
And our, and our budget as it currently stands.
Thank you, A.T. For the answer to our question.
Yeah, I think we can certainly learn from Bloomington's ordinance and take maybe some of the definitions, the responsibilities, without suddenly creating a staff of six that we have to find funding for. I'm assuming you, yeah, sure. Any other council comments, questions?
I think if A.T.'s not concerned with the vacancy and the impact to the board, I think it's worth our time to do this in a holistic way. And we're, you know, we've talked about how ordinances are outdated, not just this one, but in terms of the entire ordinance in the city code where we can make the impact, we don't want to just put a Band-Aid on this part. And if A.T. doesn't have any concern with the function of the board, and I don't have any concern with the function of the board, they can still continue to meet. It's really no different than someone being absent, right?
So this won't hinder any by leaving it vacant?
That'd be my biggest concern, as long as you can continue to function with the vacancy.
And make the decisions that need to be made and done with your board that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we technically, it technically doesn't, it's not a vacancy until filled, so they're still serving.
So you still have that member on there?
That's right.
They serve until it's reappointed.
They may serve until we reappoint, correct?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And wasn't she one of the applicants in the first round?
No.
No.
No. Different. This person has indicated that they are not interested in reappointment, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So, but they will continue to serve until an appointment is made.
I agree with our council president. I mean, if we're going to do it, this is the time to fix it. We got our hands on it.
We don't, we don't need to put.
I agree with you. I agree 100%.
What if I could add?
I'm appreciative of the time that the council's putting in these committee meetings that we're, we're holding, and, you know, little by little, we can chip away at some of the issues we have with our code in general.
When I attended the commission meeting last week, and Sandy, I was here as a member, the general feedback I got from the commission is their directive, their mission, their job has changed significantly in the last several months between the change of administration with the mayor and with A.T. coming on board, and they're certainly much more hands-on, they're doing the work that is outlined here, and I think that's why it's most important that we undertake this so it is, that becomes the norm. It can't fall by the wayside where it just becomes a board that they come in and vote on something and leave. This is important work, and as we've identified, we don't have the resources of a city like Bloomington to hire top staff. We rely on these commissioners to do this heavy lifting and do this work. They've been, you know, handling these community outreach events the last several weeks that are critically important. And I think that all goes back to what, what started this conversation is we felt that the political affiliation requirement was hindering us meeting the standard in the qualifications that it's broadly represented the community in our, to race, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, and abilities. So we felt that those were conflicting. So since that's what eventually brought us here in the first place, I do want to open it up for discussion among the committee regarding that requirement for political affiliation. Is that something we still believe we should look at or not?
Well, in my opinion, we're having difficulty following a position because of it, so that's hindering the.
And I think what it boils down to, I mean, it's a lot of what I said at the last city council meeting, in its mission, it's not a political board, so I think having the political affiliation, I don't, I wasn't around when this was written, so I'm not sure what the thinking was, but yeah, it's hindering who we can put on. So I'm still in board of removing that requirement.
I think, Amanda, when it was put in, it was kind of following other boards.
Ah.
Okay, because a lot of the boards do have a political affiliations that you have to, I guess if we have a board member here, I guess it'd be a question if they've ever have you ever saw anything that really truly would be a reason that we would need to have the political affiliations?
No.
Why you've been on the board?
No. I mean, I think that the things that we do as a board and that A.T. does, I mean, the whole point of it is that it crosses the spectrum.
Right.
And so I've never seen, and this is, maybe a second here, I've lost track, I've never seen something come upon that's like, well, you know, if we had a Republican and we might decide this differently.
My guess is at the time that it was, that the ordinance originated, there were some kind of concerns about certain majority powers of boards and commissions, and it probably was a part of the language that was included because of that at that time, based on whatever was happening in the world at that time.
As you said, it's hard for me to imagine, I mean, this is not such a glamorous thing to be, it means a lot to me, it's part of, you know, who I am, but I can't imagine that someone says, I want to be on that Human Relations Commission. I don't want to care about human rights. I don't care about dignity.
Right.
I just want to be on that board. I think it's going to self-select people across the spectrum who care about these issues.
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts would be is if we're going to try to fix this entire thing, and we're going to be doing the research and looking at other communities, maybe we let that lead the entire process is my thoughts. I mean, if A.T. says it's not bothering her at this point, I'm pleased to do whatever this board wants to do, but I'm just saying if we're going to let that process move forward, then maybe we should allow the whole thing to be looked at and see what other communities do.
In terms of timeline, I mean, do we want to set a deadline for ourselves to have the proposal put together?
I had invited our city attorney to be present today. He's out of town for vacation.
Right.
I do want to touch base with him next week about some of this, make sure it's in line with state statute, you know, have a conversation with him about the general discussion we've had here. Again, probably meet with A.T. and the mayor to work out some language, and then perhaps we can accomplish that and come back with another meeting to look at the proposed language. Either that, or we could even do it over email and bring it to the council for approval. I think we can probably get this done in the next month.
I would agree.
And have it for May.
Yeah.
We have to just be aware of filing deadlines, but again, I think it's, if we are not hindering the function of this commission, then I think it's better that we do it right than fast.
Or you'll be revisiting it again.
Yeah. As the mayor has said, we could, you know, 900-plus pages of city code, we could do this for every section of city code in general, and this, I think it's, this is the time to do just this section, really look at it and make sure it's truly reflective of our values of the direction that the city wants the commission to go, and it's really reflective of the work they're doing, because after attending their meeting and hearing the work they're doing, I have a hard time meshing that in a lot of ways.
Put your bag.
Yeah, they're coming. So if everybody's fine with that, I don't think we need a motion or anything, and I'll continue to have conversations, keep you all in the loop about language and things with, between the mayor, A.T., and city legal, and hopefully we can have something before the full council, perhaps in May.
Sounds good. Michelle, you have anything?
Oh.
Did you need to say something?
I will be prepared to make a report at next week's meeting.
I may, yeah.
And then the council will let me know what we're doing about the vacancy, or just know we've been open for a while.
Okay.
Both of you took recommendations.
How much, how much do you need, like a written report for the?
Usually it's a recommendation that has to be in writing, because I just think in a while.
Okay, I can do that. Yep, no problem.
Chairman, are we, are we going to get back together to review the final before we recommend to the council?
I think that would probably be the best, officially make a recommendation, so we can actually have some wording in front of us and make sure it's, everybody in favor of that.
I'd rather do that and start making amendments at the time that we're taking a vote on. Yeah.
I agree. Yes. Right. And hopefully, you know, we'll try to schedule when Council Azar can be with us too, so we can get his input.
Somebody might see a was and a shall and a.
Right. And like A.T. said, I mean, they're just grammatical things too. You want to make sure, anytime you're doing code, you want it to be clear.
Yeah.
Shall means will. Yeah. There's no further discussion? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
I didn't know we could do that without George.